I call this Senate Commission Regular Meeting Tuesday, April the 25th, 2023 to order at 6:05 PM. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus Christ, thank and praise you, God, for another day. Thank you, oh God, that we were allowed to be here one more time. Father God, as we, oh God, try to conduct the business of the city. God, we ask you, God, for your leading and your guidance. And God, we pray, God, that you will bless all of us. Oh God, bless our city, bless our commission, our mayor, and our citizens. Oh God, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff. And most importantly, thank each of our audience who've been here this afternoon to participate in our regularly scheduled meeting. I also would like to acknowledge Terry from Congress House, Representative.
Rick Roth. Rick Roth.
Rick Roth, sorry. And Terry, I also would give you an opportunity to say a few words if you'd like at one point. Next on our agenda would be the additions of emergency on emergency basis from our City Manager, if there's any. City Manager, are there any additions to our agenda?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2023-21.
And could you maybe state briefly the nature of the emergency that caused for the agenda being added?
Yes, sir. This is, PBSO came to us about potential threats to our citizens in the park and in any kind of group, assembling groups of five or more. So just reviewing our codes and resolutions and ordinances, we would need to amend this to delegate authority to the City Manager for park hours and closures in event there's any other threats upon the citizens of Pahokee.
And again, that was 2023 dash?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Okay. Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. City Commission, having heard the one add on the Resolution 2023-21, and there's no additional deletions, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, I move to add Resolution 2023-21 to the agenda.
As well as the acceptance of the amendments? Yes. Are there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of the agenda with the one add-on Resolution 2021 dash 20, 2023 dash 21. Call for questions?
Yeah. What, what's the reason for this?
So that the City Manager's position for a one-year period, if needed, can close the parks if necessary if there's a public threat.
And that's how I was going to read, if it's a public threat?
So there's sections on here. Section Adoption of the Representation. Two, Authorization of City Manager. City Commission hereby delegates authority to determine park hours and park closures to the City Manager for one year, for passage of this resolution. And then the effective date. The, whereas, I'm just looking at, where was that?
Effective today?
No, the whereas.
Can I help you?
Go ahead.
Okay. So through the mayor, this is, it's a resolution, simply in your code of ordinances, you can delegate the responsibility to the City Manager to close parks or amend the hours. And so you can, you can do that in your current ordinances if it's done by resolution. So this is a resolution being brought to you all so that you can hopefully consider what the manager is saying because he's getting, he's gotten some information from law enforcement that there are times that there may be threats that, to health, safety, welfare, that kind of thing, in the parks. And so you would be simply giving him the authority to, under those circumstances, to make that determination and use his discretion working along with law enforcement. So this would allow for up to a year for the manager to, you know, work in conjunction with PBSO and make a determination as to whether park hours should be limited or closed on a particular day. So that's what this does.
So as it was now, whenever they, they recommended it?
This, this would be discussed. It hasn't been passed yet, so we want to make sure we just follow the agenda. What this did was just add that topic to the agenda.
So I could ask the questions when, when it comes to it?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Next, we had our public service comments, public service announcement.
We, we had to vote.
On what?
Adding, adding it to the agenda.
Okay.
It's already motioned and set.
In addition to questions, hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion passed by unanimous full vote. Next, we'll move to our public service announcement and public comments. City Clerk, at this time, do you have any public service comments or completed?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Thelma Freeman?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Thelma Freeman. I reside in Pahokee. My address is 3510 North 86th Street, Apartment 4. My concern was to ask the City of Pahokee about a bench being placed where Precious got killed at. As I do pass by on a daily basis, because I live here, I was wondering why wasn't, was the stop sign placed back? And another question that I had was, you was talking about the park hours and closure time. When they had the graduation ceremony on a Friday, PBSO did escorted us out saying that it was time for the park to close. I don't know whether or not that was part of the city to say it was a certain time for us to leave because it was graduation, not graduation, prom hours, and it did get late. But anyway, PBSO said that they had to escort us and have us to leave the park. So if that's a concern about the park hours, from my understanding is, from the Sheriff Department, it's already been in place by the city.
There's a curfew on park hours during the, when I, I'm using the word curfew, but there is a time on the park closure and opening, sunrise and sunset, that have always been the case in the city, as well as most parks have the same hours for park closure.
Okay. The concern about the bench, I wanted to try to get together with other peoples in the community to see about the bench on that corner where she passed at. Do I have to go and get a permit? How would I go about to do that? Because it's only there, just boxes, a big brown box there, and just flowers, just there.
And property owner, I think.
Ms. Freeman, you, you come see me.
I have a business card from the past you gave me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's my.
Ms. Isabel Madonna?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm so sorry I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting. My name is Isabel McDonald, and I reside at 199 North Elm Avenue here in the City of Pahokee. But I wasn't able to make it because I was on grandma's business. So anyways, I wanted to see if there was any follow-up and that, again, address the need for regular follow-up regarding issues that are brought up in the meeting. I wasn't here, but I don't know for sure if there was any follow-up regarding the annexation that was supposed to be looked into for the different areas of the city to expand the limits and also the population and so on and so forth, everything that goes along with annexation. Also, the ARPA Fund, the ARPA Business Applications, I don't know if they were made available, but if someone could give us an update on those applications that are supposed to be available for business owners, that would be good. And again, to reiterate regarding follow-up, whenever we bring up issues in the meeting, I feel that those issues should be followed up on or provided response and updates, even if the person that initiated the question is not present. Those issues need to be addressed and provided follow-up as needed. Do you all have any?
Ma'am? Mrs. McDonald, at the last meeting, we did add to the City Manager's report follow-up section. So to answer your two questions, you have Annexation Workshop will be May 9th between 4:00 and 6:00, right before our next City Commission meeting. And at the 6:00 PM mark of that meeting, we will have the ARPA Small Business Development presentation there and the resolution to approve that park.
Okay, so the last person on your staff that I spoke with regarding the application for businesses, I was told that it would be addressed in the last meeting, and then the applications would have been made available that following Monday, so.
It's just a little delay. We, we having a little more scrutiny legal-wise, and we'll, we'll have that out at the May 9th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
No, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to the consent agenda. We have one item on our consent agenda, that's the April 11, 2023 Regular City Commission meeting.
So we have, Kevin, are you here today?
We had a presentation for FDOT on the roads. He's the senior project engineer.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here. So I wanted to give a general project status update. We're, we're currently coming near the completion of the, of the project to repave the road and build sidewalk from Shirley Drive to East Main Street. As of April 16th, our estimate cutoff date where we pay a monthly estimate, we were at 85% cost and 93% time. But as you may have seen, we finished up the, the majority of our paving this past week, which is the bulk of that remaining cost on the, on the project. We expect to be running through minor corrections and resolutions through the month of May and successfully completing our project in the near future. So that's our general update. If you guys recall from our previous presentation when we were starting out the project, our team is also going to be heading up a couple of the projects in the region in the near, in the next year. Those include, I think, the most one, the one most relevant to the City of Pahokee is State Route 729, State Market Road, from State Route 15 to the other portion of State Route 15 and, and other sections of State Route 15 further to the north. The second reason I wanted to come and speak apart from a project update and to answer any questions, if you guys have any as to the status of our project, was, was to kind of request from our community leaders, we've had a couple instances of, of threats to the safety of workers during later working hours throughout the week, and also a, a couple instances of vandalism to newly installed sidewalk and, and other project items. So if you can, if you can spread the message, you know, we're really trying to close out these projects quickly and move forward and get the traffic headaches out of you guys' way while you, while we're working on this project. We have projects coming in the future to make improvements to the area, and just any buy-in from the community to help get the message out, to help us protect those new improvements and get them done quickly so we're not spending time, as much time doing repairs and extending traffic delays would be a huge help, and we really appreciate your buy-in and helping get that message out. And so that's really the, the main purpose of our speaking here today.
You have any questions for us?
So you have what, vandalism to your equipment, or what?
Uh, some to equipment, and there's been, I think the main one that's been impacting our ability to close out the project has been repetitive drawings in wet concrete or even dry concrete being damaged to like new sidewalk that's been, had drawings or curse words and things like that all through it. And, and even when it's fully cured, we've had people destroying new, newly placed sidewalk. And, and, you know, that sidewalk's going to be a really good benefit for the community. It's already kind of, a lot of portions, I think, most of it's being put into use as soon as we can. We're trying to open it up to pedestrians. But, but we are going to have to spend some time, you know, figuring out what repairs need to occur and how to repair these sidewalk areas. So that's the main one that's been most impactful to the project, but there has been, you know, a variety of smaller instances as well. Any help in getting the word out in terms of talking to the community and saying, hey, look, these guys are just trying to get in and out of your hair as quickly as possible, make this permanent improvements to the community. Much appreciated. Really appreciate your buy-in with that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have on our agenda is the proclamation declaring May 20, 23rd as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This is proclamation declaring May 2023 Mental Health Awareness Month and Trauma Informed Care Month in Palm Beach County, Florida. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas everyone experiences times of stress and struggles in their lives, especially in the last year due to the pandemic, social and racial injustice. And whereas, one in four adults and one in five youth ages 13 through 18 experience serious mental health issues. And whereas, 60% of adults and 50% of youth do not receive the treatment necessary for their mental health needs due to limited or no knowledge of the need, barriers to care, or fear and shame. And whereas, research recognizes that adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, which include, but are not limited to, physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, physical and emotional neglect, household dysfunction, untreated mental illness, or incarceration of a household member, domestic violence and separation or divorce involving household members are traumatic experiences that can have a profound effect on a child's developing brain and body and can result in poor physical and mental health during childhood and adulthood. And whereas, community understanding and available supports and services can greatly impact a person's ability to handle their stress and struggle and move forward. And whereas, promoting mental health and wellness leads to higher overall productivity, better educational outcomes, lower crime rates, stronger economies, lower healthcare costs, improved family life, improved quality of life, and increased lifespan. And whereas, studies show that the effects of ACEs are felt by people regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status. And whereas, each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, faith-based organization, nonprofit agency, and, and citizen shares accountability for the community's mental health needs and has a responsibility to promote mental health awareness and support prevention efforts. And whereas, the importance of attending the mental, to, attending to mental health has become even more pronounced in the last five years due to COVID-19 political and social unrest and the resulting economic crisis. Isolation, sickness, grief and loss, home instability, change of routines, and community trauma have increased the need for mental health services. And whereas, the City of Pahokee of Palm Beach County, Florida, recognizes the impact of awareness and education, access to services, and acceptance of the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success and supports the implementation of trauma-informed approaches throughout the systems of care. Now therefore, I, Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor of the City of Pahokee, and on behalf of the City Commission, I do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness and Trauma Informed Care Month, done this 25th day of April, 2023. It is signed, Keith W. Bab, Jr., and along with Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, Commissioner Derek Bowden, and Commissioner Sarah Perez.
Thank you. At this time, we ought to entertain a motion for the adoption of the proclamation for Mental Health Month.
We have moved that we would adopt proclamation declaring May 20, 20, May 2023 Mental Health Awareness and Trauma Informed Care Month in Palm Beach County.
Second. Second. It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the adoption of the proclamation representing Mental Health Month. Call for questions? Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have a proclamation from a Florida senator, Senator Gail Harrell, City Manager, City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation to celebrate I Love Pahokee Day on April 1, 2023. Whereas, the City of Pahokee is the first city in western Palm Beach County to have the distinct privilege of celebrating 100 years of incorporation and service to its citizens. And whereas, since its incorporation in 1922, Pahokee has reimagined access to the beautiful Lake Okeechobee, where it is now the site of a premier destination location for camping, citywide events, fine dining, and visiting tourists. And whereas, the name Pahokee means grassy waters in the Creek language. And whereas, residents affectionately refer to Pahokee as the monk due to the mineral-rich dark soil in which sugarcane, citrus fruits, and corn are grown by agribusiness. And whereas, in the 1930s, Pahokee was known as the winter vegetable capital of the world. And whereas, Pahokee's football team, the Blue Devils, has won six state championships in 1989, 2003, 2004, 2006, 2007, 2008, including a span from 2006 to 2007, which featured a 28 to zero record, a number six national ranking, and two state championships. And whereas, a Pahokee is the home of countless NFL greats, including Anquan Boldin, Purnell McPhee, and NFL Hall of Famer Ricky Jackson. And whereas, on Saturday, April 1st, 2023, through an annual event affectionately named I Love Pahokee Day at the Commissioners Park, citizens of Pahokee experience, celebrate the many milestones Pahokee has accomplished throughout its 100-plus years of incorporation, coupled with the vast reasons they are proud to live in the City of Pahokee today. Now therefore, I, Senator Gail Harrell, of Florida State District 31, do hereby celebrate I Love Pahokee Day on April 1st, 2023. It is signed, Senator Gail Harrell.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Commissioner. I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of this proclamation.
We have moved that we would accept proclamation from Senator Gail Harrell for I Love Pahokee Day.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the acceptance of the pro- It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bolden for the acceptance of proclamation from Senator Gail Harrell. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to our consent agenda items. We have one consent item on our agenda, which is the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-third Regular City Commission Meeting Minutes. If there is no objection, we will move this item forward unless someone from the commission would like to pull it for discussion. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda item, which consists of the minutes.
Mayor Bab, I'm moving to adopt April eleventh, twenty twenty-three Regular Commission Meeting, and it's.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly second by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of the minutes of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-third Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez? Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we move to old business, discussion of any existing activities or previous held event. First item, we have the discussion of proposed mandate for the department heads to have city of Pahokee residency. This is an item that I brought up at our last commission meeting to add to this agenda. I wanted us to consider having residency for our department heads and above. I mentioned the fact that the city of Riviera Beach does the same thing, also City of Tampa and a couple others. I was hoping what we would have is a draft resolution or ordinance so we could tweak it, change it, vote it down, and vote it up. But I guess staff is waiting on us to make a final decision of whether or not this is something that they would like for us to do. I think it's very important because it helped bring up the economy of the city. It helped raise the tax rate of the city as far as property taxes being paid and income taxes and sale taxes. And it just benefited the city all over, I believe. So I'm just asking for your consideration in looking at this ordinance and hoping that we would consider doing something similar. The, actually, the ordinance is not here at this time. I was, I'm just guessing that the city manager maybe wanted to see if the majority of the commission felt similar. I'm just only one person I brought it forward, but at least we had a majority that say it's worth discussing. And so that's where we are now.
Can you remind me, what was it about?
It's an ordinance that would require department heads in the city, directors, to be required to live within the city of Pahokee.
Is that why they have the little section here about employees not being forced to live in the city? I didn't see that. Residency within the city or any specific distance from the city is not prerequisite for initial or continued employment unless specifically required by the charter. Non-employee will be denied employment based solely on residency or distance from the city of Pahokee. They added this in there for you, right?
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
That's on the next tab. They have one of qualifications and they have one of residency.
Okay.
Keep going. One more, one more tab.
The next one.
So I'll let the city manager address this. So the two documents, page eleven and on the other side, page twelve, comes from, the first one comes from the city charter, section two-nine-one qualifications, the city manager shall be appointed by the city commission on the basis of administrative qualifications and training. The city manager shall not be required to be a resident of the city. Under no circumstances shall the manager be related by blood or marriage to any member of the city commission. No city commissioner shall be eligible to serve in the position of city manager until the expiration of one year from the date that the party last served as city commissioner. And then from the city employee's handbook, page five, on page twelve, residency within the city at any specific distance from the city is not a prerequisite for initial or continued employment unless specifically required by the charter. No employee will be denied employment based on residency or distance from the city of Pahokee. These are two existing things which would create a grandfather in situation. So I did receive your orders, Mayor, which is ordinance, drafting ordinance, require department heads to live within city limits. But these two things were glaring things, and I just wanted to know how, the consensus of the commission, how they want to go for it.
City Attorney, based on this information, I know this basically coming from the personnel manual. I don't take it specifically, I'm not aware that it is specifically addressed in the charter. So if it's not, we could have, I'm just guessing, we could have an ordinance to address residency for a department head or higher. If that's not the case, just kind of like.
What, what I was just trying to do is look at two-nine-one of the manager says it's in the charter. I'm not sure if it's in the charter or the code ordinances. So we'll check that out right now. But if it is in the code ordinances, it would be something that you could, you know, change if you wanted to. You could amend that section. And I think what the manager is pointing out is on the back page of that, you do have something also in your current handbook, which you've already, I guess, approved by resolutions, so you've approved that. So I'm assuming he brought those two issues to you because they've already, you've already made some, not, maybe not this current board, but there's some, some decision.
The handbook itself, though, is a policy, so that could be changed. If it don't specifically say in the charter that it's against the charter, then we have to try to do it through an amendment through the city charter. But I'm just trying to make sure that we have the information we need to even make a decision on whether or not this is something we would like to be, have done. I'm not sure what the feeling of the other commissioners are, I just know it's, I have a strong feeling, I just think it would benefit our community itself to bring up our standard of living by having high wages, employees live within our city as they stand now. Folks, go ahead.
I decided to actually look into that and one of the things that I discovered is there's a lot of back and forth on this issue. There's been a lot of pushback in municipalities as well as states when it comes down to this. Oftentimes, when wanting to do something like this, it's often stated how it could benefit the economy. But that's referred to as the Carver theory, which states that a public, it's the public Carver theory. And it's essentially that resident workers are presumed to support the local economy. This theory has been discounted by the Yale Law Journal entitled Municipal Employee Residency Requirements and Equal Protection. It creates a lot of issues. And quite frankly, I don't, from doing research, I don't think that that's something that we're prepared to do. In most cases, municipalities would mandate that either police chiefs or fire chiefs be mandated to live within the city limits. And in some cases, like Tampa, the director of Parks and Rec, not all of the employees. It creates a lot of hardship situations and, you know, though it's not unconstitutional, there are a lot of drawbacks to adopting this type of policy for municipalities. Like I said before, oftentimes people want to purport that it helps the economy. Studies indicate that, that, that a non-resident or a resident does no more than non-residents in most cases. For example, oftentimes we drive available to patronize their businesses, citizens who are currently, of course, living in Pahokee. So there's no significant evidence to, that suggests that a person outside of our city limits would benefit the economy more so than someone even in it. And these are, like I said, these studies have been done probably since the nineteen fifties. And cities have tried, some have succeeded, who have just cause for doing so. That would be referred to as a legitimate governmental interest. I don't think we are in a position right now to adopt that. Number one, we don't have a police, we don't have a fire chief, and we don't have a police chief. There are a couple of challenges that I discovered. Residency requirements may be valid, may be a valid condition placed on employment, but these requirements are subject to certain restrictions under the U.S. Constitution, namely right to travel, equal protection clause, and privileges and immunities, that's one. The purpose of the ordinance must be rationally related to a legitimate governmental interest in which our Carver theory does not, it really doesn't hold up to that. Reasons advanced by municipalities may be subject to factual investigation. Residency requirements may lack a substantial relation to the purported Carver rationale. Preferential treatment policy advanced by the council will likely raise constitutional concerns and may very well conflict with state law. Residency requirements are mandatory subjects of collective bargaining. Of course, we don't necessarily have that because we don't have anybody in the unions who in many cases would actually negotiate those terms. Like I said, I would understand if we did that in the event that we were in that situation where we did have a police chief or an actual fire chief that wasn't county, however, we don't have that. In the event that we did, we would definitely have to negotiate with them through their unions. Now, there are cities that have successfully done that. Those cities have also put up money for mortgage programs and actually financed those individuals actually living within their municipalities. So I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse when it comes down to this. Yes, if you take the salaries of all of our directors, with a median household income of about thirty thousand dollars right now, we take it, take the salaries of all of our directors, that'd put us around an average of seventy thousand, which would be basically a median of about fifty thousand. I just don't want to, us to try to take a silver bullet approach to improving our economy by taking these measures. I honestly believe that it's gonna have to, gonna have to do this the hard way. Also, how many directors do we have, about six or seven? Businesses look at way more than just median household income. There are a lot of other factors to be considered when talking about improving our economy. Some businesses, grocery stores, et cetera, for example, like a public would be expecting lots of traffic and maybe in some cases about ten thousand, ten thousand homes. So like I said, I just think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse with this. I don't think we're prepared for it based on what I've seen. We do need a solid middle class. Unfortunately, that's not going to be seven people.
Yeah, I'm not, seven people is definitely not going to solve the entire problem, but it's a start. And those folks who make more tend to spend more within their own community. And I guarantee you, if you take those director, if they was here, when you have an organization or a church organization that need a donation, a need to have some type of function performed, they're gonna come to you. They come to me all the time, and I'm retired. I'm just telling you, those middle-class individuals help this community tenfold. Not only just the dollars they make, the circulation of the money that being put in there. I would certainly hope that we also look at even Riviera Beach ordinance and see why they did what they did, and it seemed to be working there. And you mentioned the fire and the police department, those are normal agencies, they exclude from the residency, not having to live and make. Well, I'm saying according to my research and information, I have a lot of it, there are some areas that require the police and fire because they want them closely to the area where they work at so they can respond quick. But the majority of them, but the majority of them that I've read exclude police and fire from this particular ordinance.
Point of order, Mayor Bab, that sounds good, but we looking at the city of Pahokee. Okay, we have probably about seven to ten directors or managers that makes, and we keep saying big salaries. Actually, if you look at the salaries that they make are really not big salaries, really in the position that they really make. That's all that we could actually afford to pay them. Because if you really look at the salaries that those positions really make, they don't, they really don't make that salary. Okay, that's number one. Number two is I think we are hurting the city or municipality when you say that you have to have your directors or managers. You're hurting people now to, if those positions come open to even apply. And if that's the case, we need to look at the schools, we need to look at our doctors, we need to look at, you know, our attorney doesn't live here. And we have ten, probably ten key positions that these people are, that are in these positions now. That means your city clerk, your city clerk doesn't live in the city of Pahokee. Your partner, your finance director doesn't live in the city of Pahokee. So we looking at key positions that we are like, pretty much like banning, you know. And then again, housing shortage, where, where are they gonna go? And really to build up, you saying you're averaging taxes and to build up your economy like that, you probably need at least over a hundred to two hundred more homes here in the city of Pahokee to build your average taxes up to do this. You mentioned Riviera Beach, Riviera Beach is not, you know, five-mile radius city. Riviera Beach have a lot of pockets where a lot of different houses and homes and apartments that probably they, they manage or their city can, can find housing. But we live here, we can't find housing for the people that is in pocket building as we trying to get condemned. So to, to, to do this, and I think is you hurting even potential people that want to come even to work for your city. We have people who live here, but, but works in West Palm Beach. What if West Palm Beach, okay, we only want people at that position to live here, we could be, then our unemployment rate is gonna shoot, skyrocketing. So to, to say this, here, I, I total, I'm total against this, this here at, at the moment.
Any other comments?
Well, I see their point of view and, and some ways, some ways they are right, but in your own way, you're right. And if you think about it realistically, realistically, it'll be kind of like, what would happen if they lose, if they lose their jobs? Where are they gonna go? You know, they already set with their homes from out of town. You know, if they lose their jobs and they're moving here, then they gotta worry about paying for another house. Because nothing's guaranteed for them all. That's the only issue I see. But I can see where you're coming from, and I agree with you on that point, but the reality is, it's all about providing, you know, your job and your home.
Mayor Bab? And I'll say, as far as, you know, in the future, we're gonna, you know, continue to, I have to pull on talent for certain positions. I don't think it's wise to put those types of limitations on people that have the abilities and who meet all the requirements, yet they're outside of our city limits. I don't want us to limit ourselves and basically, for lack of a better phrase, cut our own arms off when it comes down to the talent that we can actually pull from. That's a huge pool of talent that we could potentially be cutting off simply by putting, you know. you know, putting these residency requirements in place. Like I said, over the years, a lot of cities have attempted to do it, some have succeeded, some have failed, but at the end of the day, we have to really have a justifiable reason to do such a thing. Like I said, I totally agree that, you know, having that injection of salaries would, you know, raise the median household income. Like I said, I gave you the numbers, it'll, it'll come around about 50. But seven people are not going to impact our economy in terms of the demographics that most businesses look for when they decide to take resident, when they decide to open up in the city. There's so many other factors to consider outside of that. And like I said, I just think it's a, it's a Band-Aid on a much bigger issue that we have. As Vice Mayor Mervin mentioned, the housing inventory is an issue. That in and of itself won't allow us to actually mandate that, where are they gonna move to? What, what home are they gonna be in? I just think that that's probably something that we should consider further down the road when we're far more developed than we are.
Okay. You have any insight, Commissioner Perez?
No, I'm leaving that up to y'all.
All right. What I'm gonna do is move that we adopt this ordinance to require residency for anyone who is a director or above.
I do have a question, Mayor Bab.
Just give a second, if we can. If we not, then if it die for the like of a second, we'll move on. Don't hear a second, we'll move on. Die for the like of a second. Okay. You can make a question.
Okay.
All right, so, we'll move to that one.
Mr. Mayor, the add-on item? There's an add-on item.
Resolution. Next we have a resolution add-on is 2023-21, City Attorney.
The public hearing, the ordinance is next.
Actually, the clerk is saying it should be the ordinance next.
We do have one ordinance, ordinance 2023-05, City Attorney.
2023-1?
Oh, five. One moment, Mr. Mayor.
What page is that?
I didn't see it.
Oh, I don't know.
It shouldn't be, I don't know. I don't either. I don't think I have it in my packet. The clerk is looking for it right now.
Give me a second, let me run and print it out.
Oh, he's, he's drilling. They're drilling something.
It just has a point of privilege why the city clerk is looking for that resolution. Just wanna ask Terry, do you want to see anything on behalf of the House? Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor Bab, Commissioners, and Madam Clerk, which just stepped out, and Citizens of Pahokee. First, I want to say how pleased I am about the proclamation this evening, recognizing the importance of all of us being aware of mental health. I'm grateful for the opportunity that I've had for several years to participate with Healthier Glades and, under the leadership of Annie Eiffel. Perhaps we can all get a picture later with our, the proclamation. But from my position as A to Representative Rick Roth, the representative is in, in Tallahassee still, they'll be back in a couple of weeks. I'm sure we've all been following carefully all of the work that's being done in Tallahassee. And the representative is a very special person. He cares so much about the community, and he does want to start having town hall meetings on a regular basis in all three of the Glades communities, perhaps, perhaps Kinnell Point as well, but definitely in Pahokee, Belgrade, and South Bay. And so, if anyone would like to meet with Representative Roth after, after session ends in mid-May, early May, actually, please give me a call. I have an office over in Belgrade City Hall with the mayor there. I share his office, I should say, he allows me that. But if anyone would like to meet with Representative Roth, please let me know. But also, the town hall meetings are going to be open to the public, of course, but I believe he's going to be specializing, having specialized meetings as well. So there might be one about education, or there might be one about mental health, or whatever. And so if you want to make recommendations for the town hall meetings, please do, because it needs to be given take for our representatives to represent everyone properly. So thank you for the moment to speak.
Thank you. And at this time, it would be a miss if I didn't recognize Annie from Healthier Glades. Would you come up so we can present you with the Mental Health of the Month proclamation? And if you would, Commission join us, let me take a photo and make a note.
You got two?
Yes, sir.
Just, yeah, just pull it out.
No, 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 that's the statement. Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
No, this is him.
Yeah.
On behalf of the local city commission, Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioner Warren Gonzalez, Commissioner Sarah Perez, Commissioner Deb Bowden, along with our City Manager Rodney Lucas, we're so honored and privileged to present this proclamation to Healthier Glades, representing mental health, my, and for all the activities that your organization provide to bring attention to mental health. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Of course, and I know you're such a big advocate of mental health, please say a few words.
Give everybody a chance to get seated.
So, thank you, guys. So first of all, on behalf of Healthier Glades, thank you for continuing to support us as we continue to bring awareness around mental health issues that are happening in our community. The city of Pahokee has been a great partner for Healthier Glades since I've been the director in 2019. Also, special thanks to Terry. Terry's a member of my steering committee leadership board, so I know if, if something's not right, my leadership team is gonna come and, and represent. So thank you, Terry. Just wanna bring to your attention, for the month of May, we're gearing to do a couple of activities throughout the tri-city areas. One of them I do wanna bring to your attention is, we're gonna do mental health first aid training. And this is a training that's gonna be offered to residents throughout tri-city. It's gonna be held at Federation of Families at the Be Well Center in Belgrade. And this is an opportunity for residents to learn a little bit more about how to identify when someone is going through a mental health crisis. You're not gonna diagnose, you're not gonna treat, but you'll at least be able to provide support to that person, and also be familiar with all the resources that are available. The other thing we're gonna also be doing is, we're gonna have a mental health resource fair that's gonna take place on May 23rd in Belgrade at the Civic Center. That's gonna be an opportunity for all the mental health providers to come and make sure that we give residents information that they need, not only for children. We know we have a lot of programs that work on, that focus on children, but we need to focus on adults. Because when our adults are not mentally healthy, it bleeds into their families. And so we need to address that as a community to make sure that our adults are healthy, not only physically, but mentally as well. And so at your May 9th meeting, I'll make sure that I bring some more updated information. I wanna be mindful of your time, but thank you once again for continuing to support Healthier Glades.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Unless she went right over to, we can.
Can we go on?
Mm-hmm. And go back?
The clerk is here, so I'm gonna have to. She stepped out of the building herself?
That's what I'm trying to find out, sir.
So we continue with that, Senator? Does she take her place for now? She do roll calling and everything.
Yeah.
I can do a brief.
She's coming. She said she can do it. She said she can do it. She's, she's made out there, yes, she'll be. I bet she wants to go make some copies of it.
And now we have ordinance 2023-05, City Attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Pahokee amending Article 5, Division 4, entitled Boards and Commissions to establish new Section 2-167, entitled, entitled Special Events Advisory Board, providing for meetings, duties, term, and vacancies, providing for severability, repealer, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation for this ordinance?
This ordinance was a request of the commission to create a Special Events Advisory Board that would be selected by the commission for those positions.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, what's your pleasure on this?
Mayor Bab, I make motion that we will accept ordinance 2023-05.
One second.
It is being moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bowden that we adopt and accept ordinance 2023-05. Call for questions.
Yeah, Special Events Advisory. What would those special events be?
Okay. If in event that the city deem as a special activity that they would like some assistance with the community helping provided, some of the same thing we did with the Centennial, this don't mean that they have to always participate, but certainly the city need that extra manpower and support. This is the committee that would help organize and work with the city to, to make it happen. And I think, I know, at our last Centennial, last year, we had some concern that the Centennial Committee was taken over at some point. I don't think that was never the case. I think that committee did a great job. I don't even know how we would've did it without them, to be honest. So this would be a similar committee when our community director and economic developer need some help in putting on these activities. I think it's just a win-win. These boards.
So what about the, I thought that you guys voted to keep the Centennial Committee for all the other events.
Mr. Mayor.
That were gonna happen.
You, you, you did do that. And so, and if you look under paragraph A at the bottom, where it says 2-167, paragraph A, you'll see that it does say that for the initial two-year term, it would be the city's Centennial Committee members, and then after that would be each commissioner would have an appointee. But that's what you all said, you wanted to have that Centennial Committee serve.
Exactly.
The more community, community participation you can get from your community is always, always a plus. I respect everybody opinion, but I, I just.
Well, there's a lot of them that, that we don't have. Special education, there's, there's, there's a whole bunch in the charter that we don't even have. So why don't we establish what we need to have?
I think we need to have this, and if you feel that we need to have an additional committee, then you can make a recommendation to put forth that as a motion, at some point, we could add on our committees. I, I don't think it's ever a problem getting folks to participate. It's always a good thing.
I think that, but like they're saying, I think we already voted to have this advisory board, is what I'm saying. Maybe I misunderstood, but I think the Centennial Committee, for now, is the advisory event.
Right. The Centennial Committee itself sunsetted, so we had to come up with another committee, either, and it wouldn't be fair naming it Centennial Committee now, because really, Centennial has passed. This is a special event, but it really is similar to what the Centennial Committee was doing.
Right, but what I'm saying is, I, if I can remember correctly.
You guys voted.
I think we voted on the special event committee, and we, and we, and we motioned to let the Centennial Committee serve that board.
That's what we're doing, and that's what this ordinance is doing.
Okay.
This ordinance is coming up after this time.
We didn't do the ordinance, but we motioned to have.
You talked about it, and you made a motion, but this is the legislation that would allow for the, the ordinance to be changed. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then another thing, what you were saying, even with that board, Mayor, if you could remember, when they have their meetings, they don't just have it just with them, they had, they incorporate other people in the community to help serve whatever events that they have. You know, sometimes it'd be like 20, like you have 10 helping with this, this, the 10, but they have a committee, but each one of them have different people from the committee, from the community, helping with that event.
If I may, Mayor?
Yeah.
Just remember one thing, that make it very clear that it's an advisory board. Cause last year, when we had all the events, it's what they said. And if it wasn't for Mr. Mike Picknick, things were very disorganized. And I'm very grateful that we have Mr. Mike Picknick to organize everything. Without him, we prob, I feel personally that we wouldn't have been successful. So, just make sure that they get well-trained and it's just an Advisory Board.
I think they're aware that it was advisory, but I think everything ran very well last, every event went very well last, last, last year.
Oh, there was a lot of stuff going back, in the back.
I mean, anytime you have major events, there're gonna be some problems, maybe here or there, but overall, I, I must say, that Centennial Committee, to me, did a wonderful job, an excellent job overall. I'm not saying there was any problem, any hiccups. You may have saw some, I'm not sure, but overall, I just think they did a great job. But they're aware that they are a Advisory Board, and they're doing it to assist the City in moving events forward.
In addition to questions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, um, I'll give you my opinion whenever I audit all the events and all the tickets and all that, cause that's coming. I plan to do that. Plan to see where seventy-six thousand dollars went.
Well, if you can remember, I think, uh, after a while, someone's chair came and broke down everything that was spent. She broke down every, every ticket.
I wanna see it. I wanna see it. I wanna see every vote. I wanna see every, every payment. I wanna see everything. That's just the way I, I work.
All right, here are no further questions. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
So, this is for another committee when, when, after two years, this one is gonna come in?
No, this is their second year already.
The members of the committee itself would change in two years. The current committee, which was the, uh, Centennial Committee, is in, names on the, uh, as a member.
So, we're renewing this for another two years?
When, when the Centennial expires?
Last year doesn't count. So, it's gonna start from this year, so it'll be three years, plus last year, that's two years, two, and last year's three years.
Mr. Mayor, it would be two years from the passage of the, of the legislation.
Okay, from last year, right?
No, from the passage of this legislation, it'll be two years.
Okay. All right. Ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yep.
Mayor Bevick?
Yes. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now, we'll move to our public hearings and ordinances. We have ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five.
We just did that one, sir.
All right. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, City Attorney.
Resolution.
It's a resolution.
Resolution, okay, I'm just going all kind of ways today. Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash seventeen.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
On page fifteen.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, accepting the change order number one related to an agreement between MDO Engineering, Inc. and the City of Pahokee for Construction and Engineering Services for East Lake Village Storm Water Improvement Project financed by the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, as set forth in Exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation of this ordinance?
Yes, sir. This is change order number one for MDO Engineering. Uh, the original contract was freight eighty-four thousand two seventy-five. They're seeking an additional eighty, twenty-eight thousand dollars to increase their total professional engineering and management contract, which will be one hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-five. Uh, it, uh, is supported by, if you look at documentation, eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And in here, our supporting documentation under Exhibit A is that it is approved, uh, here on page one or page eighteen. You'll see that we have permission from FDEP agreement for this twenty-eight thousand. Staff recommends that we approve change order number one.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having had really...
Good evening. Sorry, Marcus Montes here with MDO Engineering.
We gotta approve it first to, for...
I was just gonna give any background, if you want an additional background, maybe take a question.
You can give some, that's fine.
I've been happy to work with you guys on this nice South Florida evening. Mayor, Commissioners, Manager, Attorney, Staff, thank you all for being here tonight. Um, I'm really excited about this, and the reason I wanna bring it up is we finally get the project back on track. Um, I know last month you got the contractor there. What this does, the services that DEP is paying for, um, just through the reimbursement process, lets us make sure that what we designed gets in the ground. So, what you guys pay the contractor, that's what is, I basically go back and make sure they're doing what we're doing. So, again, I've, I've been happy while I was looking through this, you know, it's over nine years, so I've been working with you guys on projects, storm water. So, again, I appreciate it, thank you, and if there's anything, any questions come up, please let me know, feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but don't go too far, cause I got a lot of questions. So, I'm gonna wait till this time.
City Commission having had ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five properly read into the minutes by our City...
Twenty twenty-three seventeen.
Resolution.
Twenty twenty-three seventeen, resolution, properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by our City Manager. What is your pleasure?
I'll move to the second resolution, twenty twenty-three dash seventeen.
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen. Call for questions.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, well, here it says, um, that... This change order is for construction, engineering, and inspection for East Lake Storm Water Project. The change order is to compensate engineering consultant for the engineering project management, coordination, design, et cetera, as it relates to the oversight of construction and the later of the project.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you explain that?
Okay. Okay, in, in layman's terms, what I do again is, um, when the contractor goes out there, builds, cleans, prepares, even through their invoice preparation, I ensure that what DEP is giving you money for and what the plans say, that they're doing.
Okay, is that not part of the description for those eighty-some thousand dollars that you put it on?
It's, it's the additional time, that's why I said I'm excited that we're finally back up here and starting again. We did have the hiatus, it was almost a year and a half, um, but again, we're back. The contractor's been awarded to go back and start work again, and I've come back in to watch the work that they've been awarded to do.
When you say additional time, what additional time? Additional time, or what?
Well, that's where the process, I guess to go back to answer that question, go back to the initial discussion. We followed and jumped through DEP's hoops, I wanted the requirements worked, complete the work. We did a report, we did construction plans, we stuck, we worked the, uh, process to do, bid the plans, and the contractor started work. During, after they started work, we continued to do inspections throughout that time. Even that year and a half, like I said last meeting, I would still come by and do inspections. I can't just stop doing inspection. I didn't get paid for the year and a half, but I wanted to make sure we were still doing our inspections. I thought it was important. I don't want the City to be at risk for something. So, now that we come back, that everybody, you know, we're starting fresh, DEP's approved it to continue the reimbursement, I wanna make sure that we go back through and get what the contractor has said they're gonna do to do.
But I don't understand what inspection you were doing, if there was no work being done, there was nobody there.
You still have inlet issues, you still have, uh, degradation issues, you have safety issues, you have roadway issues, there's a lot of items that still had to get inspected. Not only that, but we still did the initial inspections for the work. So, a lot of the items that you awarded the contractor is a lot of rework. So, a lot of that same rework, we're able to do again. Pre-construction meetings, invoice preparation, invoice review, I still have to do all that from the get-go, all over again.
Why? That's already been paid, why?
Because if I don't, put it this way, if I don't, DEP will not give you your money for the project. You have to certify the work was done and completed and certified for DEP to do the reimbursement.
Okay, so what was done is already been paid, so now until we do it, what should we pay you if you have, if you're not doing it? And are you not supposed to have done reports every time you went out and you inspected? Where are the reports?
We met, we did minutes, and we worked through the contractor. Every time an invoice comes in, we will go through the certification process, let's get you one of those invoices. We're starting fresh. You just awarded the change of scope last, last, I'll say last month, I know it wasn't quite last meeting, but last month, to do the additional work with the contractor again. So, we're starting basically at square one, if you can look at that. So, to start from here...
So, everything that we paid is, is, it's out the window now, because there was a delay in plans, delay on I don't know who, because the contractor left. We have never seen you, I've been here a year and a half, the first time I saw you was the last meeting you came. You asked for extra money, and I believe the last time, they, they voted to give you twenty-some thousand dollars because you needed to do, I guess, revision or whatever. I, I have here that out of the eighty-four thousand dollars that you were awarded, sixty-eight you had already collected. The only balance was to fifty-hundred, fifteen thousand dollars. Last time you asked for twenty-some thousand, and now it's another twenty-some thousand. So, here we go, Barfield Highway, all over again.
This is not Barfield?
No.
No, I know it's not Barfield, I know, it's, I know, it's, it's lately.
And, and this is a...
It's a different project.
Sorry, Mr. I'm not asked, I didn't ask for an official, the first time, it was explanation of what we're doing the first time, now we're regrouping and going forward. No offense, you didn't see me...
Didn't you say that you, that you left because, um, you needed more money and, but you have such a good relationship that you were still working, but you were not collecting, and then they, for you to come back and start, you know, they paid you whatever you said was all to you, and now there's another bill that's coming back again. But then I have here on the original contract, because this is not Amendment Number One. I have Amendment Number One here already, that was done prior to this.
No, actually, no, you have Amendment Number One tonight. Let me explain, we did still continue to do the work. You didn't see me a year and a half, because no offense, I wasn't getting paid, so I'm not gonna come to a commission meeting and work for free. I came to work for free because I care, okay? And I said it last time. I've been working with you guys for nine years, I don't just talk to them.
You didn't come, or you did come?
I would come to the site, yes, ma'am. I would not come to the commission meeting.
You came to the site and you did a report, everything's the same, nobody's here, everything's the same. So, now you wanna get paid for those reports?
I wouldn't put it that way. We're starting fresh. We started the precon, like the pre-construction, everybody left, because again, there were issues, I'm not gonna go through that, but there were issues, everybody left, we all came back. So, you're not starting from square one?
It wasn't pre-construction, they had done work, cause, cause they got, they got paid, uh, ninety thousand dollars a couple of times. So, if you get a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I hope it was for some work they did.
We, we just started the pre-construction process over, that's why I said we're starting the pre-construction process over. Once they demobilize, once they leave, we have to start fresh. That's why this has been an ongoing effort with DEP, to make sure we approve that they understand the process of what was going on, what the time constraints were, and what we have to finish. And I, I appreciate looking out for the money, I can hundred percent do it, but again...
You explain to me what the constraints were, what the delay was, why?
I, I can't explain that, cause again, I wasn't, wasn't you guys, that's out of my curvy. I just do the engineering. What the City's delay was, not me, that was...
So, the engineering changed?
Mayor, point of order, we're not here to drill the contract, we're here, if you voted up or you voted...
I'm here to get answers for everybody that's...
Point of order, Mayor, we're here either to vote up or you vote it down. He's here giving his, what the change order is about, you have all of the, the attachments here, let's vote it up and vote it down. But he keeps saying the same thing every meeting on every change order.
If I was say, if, if you don't have...
I would have my meeting with the residents of the City, and I would let them see everything I have and know everything that I'm asking and saying here, since nobody here is interested in knowing, you know, or maybe you guys do know what, what's really, you know, in the works, and you don't need to ask them questions.
Let them know that DEP paid for it and is paying for it and have approved it. We're gonna move on with questions.
Therefore, it's okay.
Yes, you says, um, it's for, it's for rework.
Yes, sir.
What rework is being done, and what, what was the problem, whose fault was it?
Well, it was a delay, again, when it became a delay for the City.
They're trying to tell you what fault, who fault it is.
That I don't know.
They're coming...
He said rework, rework means, Tasha, I don't interrupt you, don't interrupt me.
He said delay because that's a clause that they could use to get paid.
But delay is not rework. Rework is to redo something that's already been messed up or being repaired.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what is the issue that is rework? What's the actual issue of rework?
Along seventh, the drainage canal that was cleaned out, regraded, and, uh, um, it was cleaned up, regraded, and stabilized, the same thing along the backside. That all has to get redone.
Reason?
Because it keeps up trash.
Cause they kept throwing trash in it again.
No, no, that's not it, other than being regraded, you need to replace...
So, the engineer, the engineer has done well the first time then?
We have to, we still have to, we have to review and regrade, and supervise the contractors while they do the work, yes, sir.
And what happens when you all leave?
I, I, that's where we deliver...
Paying money down the drain, right? Because everybody's gonna go dump again, so what, what's gonna happen? What is the, what is the, what is the sense of doing this work if, if every time you leave, people are gonna dump, and then you gotta come back and do it again? Are we gonna be getting money from FDEP every time it needs to be cleaned?
Inform our residents not to throw trash into the canal. That's, that's all we, that's all we have to do. But it's not his job to stop them throwing sofas in the canal.
No, it's just...
Commissioners, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. I'm ready for a vote, uh, City Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Mayor Bevick?
Yes, motion passed by majority, four to one vote. Our next forward resolution is Resolution twenty...
Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll explain it to you, I have no issue. I'm like said, I'm transparent, I, I know government pretty well, feel free, I'll sit and show you what I do, anytime.
Next resolution is twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, the City Clerk, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving change order number twenty-two, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero-two pertaining to the contract with the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, Contract G dash one seven five three FM, number four four zero, four four two zero three zero dash zero one dash five four dash one, for the Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project as set forth in the change order attached as Exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation of this resolution?
Yes, sir. Contractor Russell Site Development is entitled to one hundred percent of the two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-six dollars and eight cent for the change to be made for the drainage system revisions four and five. The price agreement is based on negotiated settlement, the cost will be offset by an underrun of some pay items not included in this change order. The impact is two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-eight-zero-six oh eight. Staff recommends, uh, approval of change order number twenty. It is supported by, on page forty-three, uh, supporting documentations that says that it's approved by FDOT.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having had Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by our City Manager. What is your pleasure?
I'll move to accept Resolution twenty twenty dash eighteen.
Twenty twenty-three eighteen.
It says twenty twenty...
Yeah, go to page...
Okay, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. Call for questions.
Yeah, I wanna know what the negotiated settlement was, that's not included in the pocket. Yeah, I wanna know what the negotiated settlement was that's not included in the packet.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. I'm gonna allow, um, Mr. Ardet from the CEI and Rosso to explain.
All right. There was the revision. There was a revision, actually, there were two revisions that were issued following some, uh, drainage issues that were found during construction. There was off-site drainage that was draining into, uh, the existing, uh, I'm just gonna explain the nature of the, of the issue. There was some off-site drainage that was draining into the existing trunk line. The plans originally anticipated to have the original trunk line to be removed and a new trunk line in service. After it was discovered that those drainage, uh, had to, had to remain attached to the new, the existing trunk line, we had, the engineer modified the plans to move the proposed trunk line so that the existing trunk line could remain. The contractor provided an initial, uh, cost proposal and we, there was a lot of back and forth, uh, going between the contractor and I, and, and the CEI and the department to, uh, to reach us an agreed, uh, an agreed settlement on the, uh, the cost for the work to be performed to incorporate the revision to the, uh, to the contract.
So you're saying that you guys did the new one and then it wasn't compatible? So then you had to remove it so that you could keep the old one?
No, the, well, part of the new one was installed, but it's not, it wasn't completed. So it needed to, uh, keep moving to the north. And to do that, the original trunk line needed to be removed because they, they came in conflict. But after the, uh, the, uh, off-site drainage was discovered and it needed to remain attached, we realigned the, the new line away from the old, uh, the old trunk line. That required some rework, not rework, but revised plans because the, the work wasn't done yet. So, uh, but there was additional scope of work that wasn't included in the plans. And that's what's included in the cost of, of incorporating those changes to the drainage system.
So two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars is to, to, for the contractor to remove whatever is not really attached and leave the old one back in there?
Yeah, well, like, like it was said in the narrative, some, some of the, uh, original, uh, items will not be built and will be under run. So there will be a savings or an offset of the cost which is not incorporated into this, uh, into this change order. I don't remember the exact number, but it, there's a, there's a, there's an offset of the cost. But there will be under run of those pay items. The contractor didn't want to use pay items for the overrun because, for instance, there was an elliptical pipe that we need to put in place. We didn't have a pay item for that. So we had to come up with a negotiated price for that long section of trunk, of trunk, of new trunk line that required an elliptical pipe. And we didn't have that, uh, price.
And how about the other, the other eighteen inch pipe? Does any of this have to do with the new housing project that's coming up?
No.
We're not, we're, we're not doing any work connecting that side to, to-
The new project?
To the project that we're incurring the cost for?
No. That's existing, existing drainage that was discovered and that remained in place. That remained in place.
So this was an oversight from the original engineer?
It was not.
And the, the cost, the negotiated settlement, the cost started at three-hundred thousand. So it was the overrun and the under run of the items was to get the cost down. So when you speak of negotiated settlement, that was the cost to get it down to. Where is that now, to two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand? And as you see, um, FDOT, along with our CEI, along with Rosso, they have approved, which Palm Beach County was a part of the whole conversation to make sure that this was the, uh, most feasible way to get this done.
I have a question. What would happen, uh, as a result of this not being done?
It has to be done.
What if it wasn't? Just ask them.
Then you won't finish Barfield.
Okay, sounds like we need to-
It has to be done and should have been, it should have been discovered when the original engineer-
Commissioner Gonzalez.
The engineering, it wouldn't be having Twenty Two, uh-
I have a question.
Changing work order?
Yes, sir.
I know last year you and I, um, when we walked that road, we took, we, um, spoken, we spoke about issues around there. Now I know you did talk about something on, on the Second Street in reference going towards that property where the old lake, uh, the old, um, hospital was at. You said something about a slope. Something by a slope, so something has to do with that property. And this looks very familiar because you yourself told me this. This was last year.
Okay, uh, at Second Street, uh, and part of the, the change order that, uh, part of the scope of work in that change order is to, uh, is to address an existing pipe coming off on the west side into the trunk line. And the other change order that we'll talk about later, there's another trunk line coming from Third Street into the trunk line that the change order is to address.
I'm referring to-
But it's not from the, it's, it's from the west side, not the east side.
Where the old hospital used to be at?
Right.
Cause you told, you told me yourself.
Yeah, and that's the existing, uh, but that is the existing off-site drainage that was found.
But that's what I'm saying, that's the location you're referring to.
Yes. Yeah, but that's existing.
Mayor Baugh, I just have a question. Just, just not about the change order. I just wanna know if, is it any concern, any, um, way? I know now we're getting into the rainy season and I don't know if, if work can be done like in the, like on weekends or at night, you know, just to, uh, help with some of the, the progress of the, the project as if it can, if it can, I know that's a residential area. They might get complaints about the lights out there if, if it's at night. But just to help with the movement of the project, can work be done some at night?
People work during the day, five days a week if they worked all week.
Good evening. How y'all doing? Um, as far as work at night, we had no plans on doing any kind of overnight work. Uh, where we are right now, Johnson Davis is set to be back on schedule to start running underground because the change orders have been approved. Uh, they're set on schedule to come back in on the first of next month. I'm pressing right now to try and get them in sooner so we can get out sooner. But, um, but as far as overnight work, that's not on our schedule right now. It'd be an additional cost to us in order to do that. And I understand the, the pressure to actually get out of the road, which we're attempting to do. And I'm sure y'all have seen progress over the last two months with the sidewalks curved and rock going in place. We're pushing to have asphalt here within the next, uh, three weeks, just on that section. Cause again, Johnson Davis isn't gonna be out here until the end of next month. Soon as they get in, we can connect that pipe that you were talking, excuse me, that you were talking about at Second Street because that's one of the things that was holding us up. And that cost incorporated into, I believe it's a drainage change order that was approved tonight. So we can get in, modify that portion, connect, uh, the east side of Second, excuse me, the north side of Second Street to the south side of Second Street. And you see the GeoGrid, it's a little black fabric that you all see on the road out there right now. That's the GeoGrid that's gonna help stabilize the road. But, um, but we'll be able to connect that portion to the other portion and run it on through. But we're doing as much as we can right now under the circumstances. But again, like these change orders have been approved, uh, you know, I already gave Johnson Davis the, an email saying that this is coming down the pipe. Go ahead and put us on the schedule, you know, ahead of it actually being approved so we can actually get them out there. Um, uh, but I, I know I did want to answer your question, but-
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so the, the pipes that you're, they, that, um, Johnson and Davis are doing, where's that gonna go at?
Outside of what they've already installed and I just say this, the entire project itself, you have new drainage, new sewer, new water coming all along Barfield Highway. Majority or vast, but a lot of it has been installed up to this date.
It has been installed?
Yes, you have, you have water, new water and drainage installed from Seventh Street all the way down to Fourth Street. From Fourth Street to Third Street, you have the water line and some of the crossings, but no drainage and no sewer because we're waiting on the change order, uh, to, to allow us to get paid to do the work. So, and you also have water from, uh, let's say the water is running all the way down to East Main Street. But we can't, we couldn't, we couldn't put everything in because of the modifications that need to be done, uh, because of what we found in the ground that, you know, that we didn't intend to find, so.
So you might find more stuff when you do the other half?
Yes, to be honest, we might, we might, I hope not, but, but we might. You might see some more change orders coming out.
We'll never know.
But we're just being straightforward with you.
We're gonna focus on this one right here. Clerk, we're ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Mayor Baugh?
Yes. Motion passed by majority, four-one vote. Next we have Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Eighteen, City Attorney.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida approving change order number Twenty One to Resolution Twenty Twenty-One Dash Zero Two pertaining to the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, Contract G Dash One Seven Five Three FM, Number Four Four Two Zero Three Zero Dash One Dash Zero One Dash Five Four Dash One, Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project as set forth in Exhibit A, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney, City Manager. Could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Barfield Highway Change Order Twenty One. This change order is for Barfield Highway Reconstruction. The change order is for compensation to Rosso Site Development for relocation of S Dash One Twenty-Seven Drain Structure. The contractor issued RFI Number Forty-Five after discovering the existing drainage piping peering from Third Street that was not originally indicated on the plans. The design engineer of record, EOR, directed the relocation of the nearby drain structure, S One Twenty-Seven A to the south to capture the, connect the existing drainage pipe into Barfield's drainage trunk line. The relocation of the already installed A Dash One Twenty-Seven A drainage was to resolve to ordering a new drainage structure. Thus, Rosso Site Development is entitled to one hundred percent of the thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cent for the relocation of S Dash One Twenty-Seven A Drain Structure. The impact of this is thirteen-thousand-seven, seven-eighty-five dash, well, point seventy-eight. Uh, staff recommends that we approve this change order number Twenty One. It is substantiated on page Fifty-One, uh, by FDOT approval in the last paragraph, approving the funding for thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cent.
City Commission, having heard Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Nineteen properly read into the minutes by a city attorney, properly explained by a city manager, what is your pleasure?
May I move to accept Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Nineteen?
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Nineteen. Call for questions. Here in honor, you ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, give him a chance to open up now.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Mayor Baugh?
Yes. Motion passed by majority, three-two vote. Next we'll move to Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Twenty, City Attorney.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida approving change order number Twenty Two. Attached hereto is Exhibit A relating to City of Pahokee Resolution Twenty Sixteen Dash Twenty for coordination of road and utility construction for the Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
I'm just looking at the, uh, change order. So we're on Twenty, right?
Yes.
You're not in Twenty, you're like three up behind that.
No, right here.
He's talking about the resolution.
Resolution number is Twenty Twenty-
You're on change order number Twenty One.
We on change order, uh, Twenty Two. No, yeah.
Oh, you're on Twenty. Change order Twenty Two.
I see you guys are following along. All right, so. Change Order Twenty Two for Barfield Highway Reconstruction. This change order is for compensation to Rosso Site Development for grouting of the existing water main in lieu of removing the water main. This change order is for the abandonment of the old water line via grouting it in lieu of removing the water line at the section north of Fourth Street. This cost is eighteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for the grouting of the water main as an alternative to removal of the pipe. The cost will be offset by under running the pipe removal pay item. This will be paid by PBC, uh, well, Palm Beach County Water Utility District in amount of eighteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty, uh, eighteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. That is supported by, uh, document on page- Just a second here. Page is just sticking.
Eighty-three.
Page Eighty-Five.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having heard Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Twenty properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by the city manager, what is your pleasure?
May I move to accept Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Eighteen?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Twenty. Call for questions.
I have a question. Um, who inspects the work that goes on? Like when you finish one task, who goes and inspects it?
Primarily the CEI, its representatives and/or county, which is Palm Beach County, so.
I thought Palm Beach County is not, you know, left the project up to the city.
Say again?
I thought the county gave the money to the city to do the project and pretty much, you know, that, I mean, they're answering your questions and they're reviewing your, your papers, but they're not doing any inspections.
Palm Beach County still makes sure that the work is done completely. Robert Ardet is the CEI. So when he oversees the project and he passes inspection, all of his inspections, his reports go to both the county and FDOT. If it is county related, which this, um, resolution is county related, Robert sends it to the county, but FDOT also gets a copy. Because they do have to substantiate the money that they are, um, have out there for this part.
Well, we're like, do we have anybody from the city inspecting the work? I thought it's DOT. So the city hired both engineers. Both engineers are hired by the city.
The CEI, which, Momentum CEI is, we work for the city, on behalf of the city.
If I may, the FDOT agreement says that they pay for, FDOT pays for design, construction, and CEI. Momentum is the liaison, basically. He is the one who oversees that the design work that has been approved by FDOT is overseen and done completely as required by FDOT. So Ardet does not work for the city, but he is the construction inspection engineer for the project. So he makes sure, because FDOT is responsible for paying him, that the work is being done to their satisfaction.
In addition to questions?
So he signs, you know, everybody approves it and then it goes to DOT, to FDOT.
He has to certify. He's the engineer.
And then it goes to DOT and it goes to Palm Beach County and DOT. And then it goes to DOT and it goes to Palm Beach County and DOT.
But I think it's off topic. The topic right now is the change order for the grouting of the pipe that was.
I agree.
Approved for by Palm Beach County.
Any, in addition to questions, hearing the honor, you ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, motion passed by the unanimous majority of four to one vote. Now we'll move to new business, presentation by the City Manager.
One more. That's Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Right, okay. Now we have an add-on Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida delegating the authority to determine park hours and closure to the City Manager for one year, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation of this resolution?
This resolution is uh for the purpose of managing with Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office for information of any threats to health, safety, and welfare likely to take place in certain public parks within the City of Pahokee. And it's just giving authorization to the City Manager for a a year's period.
City Commission, having heard Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, properly read into the minutes by City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager, what is your pleasure?
I move to accept Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. Call for questions.
Just one thing, Mayor, uh we know that we do have, already have an ordinance where uh that if there's a state of emergency that the mayor calls for, you know, the state of emergency, so but so this doesn't uh offset that or change that, this just includes if something was to happen, if the mayor, if the City Manager hear from PBSO, there's a safety issue in the city that that he can, you know, give him some authority to um as far as parks.
And through through the mayor, this, yes, as far as parks, so the last part was what I was gonna say.
Don't you have that authority right now? Did you not take that authority a couple of weeks ago or next to go?
The commission always can override it, no emergency, y'all put that as a policy, I guess.
I just don't wanna see the abuse that Chandler did with the city. I mean, this look like a like a ghost town. It's already nowhere to go and nothing to do, so now we're gonna be abusing the power, and I'm not saying that you're gonna abuse it, but it's happened in the past. You know, it's like, nobody was, the kids weren't able to go to the to to the football field because um I don't know why, I guess he didn't want nobody using it, uh so to stay new. Uh there was no place to go, nowhere to be, the the people can't even be outside after a certain hour, you know. I understand if there's a a a safety concern, I understand a hundred percent. My 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 thing is that, and I would like to see us work together and into the community so that the community could have, you know, confidence in the in the Sheriff Department and and get to know you, and we could all live happily. You know, we we're in this community, we've been there all our lives, we're like one big family. So I'm sure if you go to a parent or this or that, or they know that you know their parent, they're they're more apt to be respectful, and I know that it's an issue that we need to work with the youth. You know, the thing is that most of the time we treat them, you know, if you disrespect, they're gonna disrespect you back, and I'm and I'm not speaking about the Sheriff Department, I'm speaking in general, because that issue happened, and it happened with the with the football team and all that changed, and it has changed throughout the years. Um, you know, we're, I I I think that there's good in all of us. I mean, we were all created by the one Creator, so, you know, it's just a matter of bringing it out. And and with with truth and love, anything could be accomplished. So I think instead of putting more more um restrictions, it's more about, you know, working together.
Okay, my input is, I certainly have some concerns. I'm always in favor of being precautious and looking out for the public's safety interest. That's that's my primary concern, but I'm hesitant to authorize a resolution that would allow the City Manager at his discretion to close parks up to a year. I can see if there was an incident, and you hate to wait on incident to occur before you act, and I'm not saying we have to exactly do that, but I know if there is a a problem, we we can shut down a park, say for a week or two or whatever the case may be, but to give that authorization for a year, I'm totally not in favor of it. I'm gonna be blamed anyway because I'm the mayor, just the title I have, which I have no authority over closing the park. I may have some input here and there, but certainly don't have any uh authority of doing it, whether they football game, uh celebration of a Super Bowl, or a a state championship. You know, even when I was in Orlando, I was blamed for closing down the city, which, you know, I I don't close down cities, but I'm reluctant, I'm reluctant. I I can see if if the City Manager came and say, you know, what, we talked with PBSO, we're gonna need a month, this place need to be shut down because of heights and threats and and activities going on in this community, wanna make sure your community is safe. I can go with that, but for a year.
No, it's just, if I may, Mayor, it's just the timeline up to a twelve-month period.
I I understand that.
I'm not shutting down nothing without talking to the commission, you know that.
Okay, I just, I'm 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 not in favor of it, I put it that way, I just make it short.
Okay, let me get, is it, is it my?
I don't think.
I have a question.
Not three, five commissioners.
My, but maybe I'm I'm reading it wrong, is it that just give him the authority for the year, not closing the park for the year?
Correct, yes.
He's not closing the park for the year?
No, I know, he haven't started, he, no.
Let me, let me, let me think, no, that, for what he's.
Based on this, he could have closed it up to a year.
But the ordinance is, you just giving him the authority for a year, case if something come up, say tomorrow that they got an active bump threat or whatever, or you know, whatever, and he says, okay, for Monday through Thursday of next week, we're gonna close park from at six instead of seven. It just giving him that authority to do that, he's not, he don't, this is not giving him the authority, say for, okay, uh.
Explain it to me, I understand that, I understand that.
Mayor, Mayor, um how was it, how was it scheduled back back in the days? Cause I know there used to be a sign out there.
For park closure?
Right.
It it was sunset to sunrise, I think the majority of the parks in Palm Beach County is under the same uh guideline, uh when night falls, park closed, when sunrise is open.
So it's just basically the timeline, the.
If there's a safety issue, he just asking if there's a something, PBSO call and say, there's really something that's really going, and for the safety of the community, I'm advising you on next week, if we can close the park for one week, cause we got something on investigation. So he has, he trying it, and he said, like he did this time, I think, went to the mayor. PBSO came to me with a concern and asking for one week to close the park for this hours or whatever. That's 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 what this is, it's not saying he's for to come and say, I'm for to close the park for January to December.
But you did it, did he do it?
I mean, isn't that part of his job?
You could do it, you did it, so.
Tasha, that is part of his job to do it anyways, right?
No, he, that's why they putting it into the resolution.
Hold on, um I'm a little confused right now, going back to uh what the commissioner said earlier. By virtue of being the City Manager, does he not already have the power and liberty to do so?
I think he.
He's asking for someone, something that he has the power to do anyway, no, he doesn't? As a City Manager?
No, through the through the mayor, as I, as I said before, if you look in the um second warehouse clause, that section of your code of ordinances allows for the the manager to close if it's delegated. So this is the exact language in quotations.
Delegated by who?
That's the, if it's delegated to the City Manager, which is what this ordinance would do. This would allow, I'm sorry, the resolution, this is what this resolution would do. It would allow the manager to make a decision if there's a health, life, safety issue, work together with PBSO and make decision, make a decision to close it. Otherwise, if something came up and it was in between a meeting that you had, he wouldn't have, he wouldn't necessarily have, you know, that authority, he, because you have an ordinance.
But he did it.
Well, you have an ordinance, I think what the mayor, what the manager wants to do is to make sure that he's operating, cause you know, in all respects consistently with your code. So this is in your code, he's coming to you, you know, you can vote it up and down.
That's right.
And he's coming to you to to try to get authority to to, for it to be delegated to him. And if you look at that warehouse clause, the second warehouse clause, that's the exact language from your ordinance that pertains to this, so he has the authority when you delegate it to him. This resolution would delegate it to him.
Okay, are you ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Va, ooh, Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
This is based on emergency, and this is based upon the advice of PBSO. Is that what what it says on there?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, if you, if you look at the um resolution, what it basically says is that the reason why he's asking for this authority is because there are threats of health, safety, welfare that um take place in certain public parks, and he wants to be able to address those issues when those issues are brought to him. So I don't get the sense he can answer for himself that he's, you know, just looking to close the parks. But you're in the middle of a vote, so I I don't wanna keep going on.
Your vote, uh, Christian.
I don't mind you having that authority, I just wanna make sure it's not abused. Cause if it's abused, I'm gonna be the first one that's gonna speak about it. And the only reason I'm saying this is because it's happened in the back, in the, in the past.
We're not debating, Commissioner, you need to vote, you can explain your vote later, but we 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 need to vote.
I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
That he understands.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mayor Bab?
No, motion passed by majority, four one vote. Now we'll move to new business, presentation by the City Manager of activity of upcoming events, if any. You and your staff have any activity need to share?
Okay, uh start off with uh, before I get started, projects. Ms. Adams, like to give uh Mayor and Commissioner an update on projects. And then uh next would be Boule Washington with events.
Good evening again, Mayor, Commissioner. Uh so for McClure project, which is FDOT funding, uh we have, last week, we met with WGI Engineering as well as Palm Beach County. These, this upcoming, next Friday, the fifth, we will have a one-on-one sitting down in their office so we can start to begin the design for the water utility. So we have been in communication and FD, I mean, I'm sorry, Palm Beach County and WGI have downloaded um the plans from Palm Beach County, so they already know what the pipes are and what they're looking at, so we will continue with that conversation on the fifth. We will also be speaking with FDOT and reference to McClure, uh myself. WGI and FDOT will be having a conversation this coming Monday, so we can continue with the design portion of it. The design for uh MLK project is being submitted to uh FDEP, so then that way we can start to get the bid process out. I'm working with WGI, so we can get that bid process submitted and turned uh sent out.
You already submitted the design?
No, we have not, no, there's still a couple of little um twerks that need to be done to it.
And who's who's doing that design?
WGI is working with me with the uh RFP and the full design that we will submit.
So they're they're doing McClure uh water, McClure uh road, and they're doing the the MLK too?
WGI is the engineer of record um from the existing contract that we have with WGI. We have submitted, uh we're, right now, we're in the process of completing uh the application, the grant application for the NEAT grant, so we have several of them that we are uh working on, and um, I'm really getting thinking on. Phase four FDOT, FDOT is responding back to uh phase four for my piggyback, so I'm piggyback, so I'm just waiting for completion of that from, at the concurrence, I'm sorry, concurrence from FDOT, and then we'll be able to present that to you, and that's it for my project update.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor and Commissioner, community members. Uh we have quite a few events coming up, back-to-back in the next uh few months. Uh next week, we have National Day of Prayer, that takes place at our um Marina and Campground, at twelve noon. We have a, our Cinco de Mayo event, that's on May sixth, and that is at our Marina and Campground as well. That is from one PM to five PM. We are still accepting vendors, if we have any vendors that are interested, there'll be a lot of activity. Also, a um car show, uh that'll be taking place, lots of entertainment and things of that of nature. Then we have uh in June, we have the Juneteenth event, that's on the seventeenth. That's at MLK Park, and that will be from three PM to eight PM. Lots of activities there as well, there will be a um a bake-off and a barbecue no-sauce rib-off, so we are taking um folks uh entries. If anyone out there in the community thinks they have what it takes to win our bake-off and our barbecue rib-off, I'm greedy, I like to eat, so bring it on. Uh we are uh accepting applications also for vendors, we are accepting application for vendors uh for this event as well. We also have a talent competition um that we'll be hosting at this event as well, and it's Pahokee's Got Talent, so we are featuring um our youth uh and their talents uh in this event. There's a first, second, and third place uh monetary prize. We are looking for sponsorship, we are looking for support in any way possible, whether you want to volunteer or sponsor, please reach out to our office. Our number is three oh, excuse me, five six one nine two four five five three four. You can reach me at extension two zero zero five. You can also email events with an S plural at cityofpahokee.com, okay?
Um, the barbecue uh competition, what is the prize? Um, on the barbecue, uh, competition, what is the prize?
It'll be a monetary prize as well.
You don't have the other?
So we don't have the number yet, because we're, we are still, um, finalizing that as well.
Is there entry fee?
No. If you are selling at our events, there is a vendor fee. But if you are competing, no.
What was the National Day of Prayer?
It's the fourth of May. It takes place at twelve noon on the dike where the flags are, are placed. So thank you for your attention and have a safe drive home.
Thank you, staff. Um, mayor, consensus on having a commissioner workshop Friday, May nineteenth regarding setting strategic and visionary planning along with, um, budget schedule for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four year at, uh, the Marina Conference Room from eight-thirty to one PM, sir. Want to see the availability of the commissioners, if we can make that happen.
It's Thursday?
May, May nineteenth, Friday. It's on a Friday, sir. And then follow-up from citizens, uh, public comments. Uh, a little over a week ago, we had heavy rains and it caused flooding along our roads, especially Barfield. Uh, we end up, uh, staff having to contact Rosso Development to drain and, and try to fill the potholes and corrections, uh, on the rough roadway there. Um, also, uh, there was, uh, we reached out to East, East Beach about, uh, potential draining or flooding in, uh, around the East Lake Village area as well. So, uh, we, we did make preparations or look into things to correct things as they were called in. Also, Parker Building status, we're pending, uh, having a meeting with Harry. Uh, I will reach out again to him. He, he called me Friday, but he couldn't meet, uh, then. He wanted to meet sometime this week. I will, uh, give you guys updates soon as I get that locked in. Uh, we had, at the last meeting, I, um, advised you guys of the NEAT grant applications. We're still pending, uh, state approvals or counties or, or wherever we applied at. Also, uh, on infrastructure, still ongoing, I'm, I'm doing the planning with Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council, uh, in developing, uh, a strategy on how we go about doing temporary repairs for our infrastructure and addressing, uh, so, so many crucial needs we have. Upcoming luncheon conferences, so tomorrow, reminder, Palm Beach County League of Cities Luncheon, uh, from twelve to one, and then at one, there's a special meeting for, uh, the elected, so hope all can attend. Uh, it'll be at Green Acres Community Center, five oh one Swine Boulevard. Also, uh, action plan, uh, at the next meeting, we will be finalizing all the ARPA resolutions on May ninth, uh, commission meeting, so it'll be the consolidation of, from, uh, the two years to one, and then the small business development. Uh, we are also, uh, pending construction, constructing a timeline for, uh, Marina and Campground timelines, going, you know, trying to do a history going back to oh four, um, halfway through getting this all together. Uh, I really appreciate the, uh, the history lesson I, I'm being taught by, uh, Mr. Brown, and, um, planning a workshop, uh, well, we have a workshop being planned for May ninth, four to six. We will be utilizing Treasury, uh, Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council. They will be spearheading our annexation. And I'll have, uh, more for that, but that'll be May ninth from four to six. And it'll be here in the chamber. Then you have still the outstanding things, the audit things that, uh, we're looking at. Hopefully, May or no later than June to start our audit for the twenty-twenty-one audit. We about have everything wrapped up that needs to get to, uh, HCT so we can get this going for that year, and then right after that, run it back for the next fiscal year. We also are going to, we had a meeting yesterday with Treasury Coast regarding all our planning needs, so I look forward to, uh, getting things, uh, together on that, um, on that and them interacting with our, uh, legal aspect if we want to move forward with a central business district core overlay. Next, probably by end of May, first of June, we'll, we should have items ready to go before the ZAP Board on One North Lake and, uh, the zoning for George for a variance change for his store expansion for a mechanical shop. Then events and meetings, so December, May fourth is National Day of Prayer, noon. May sixth, Cinco de Mayo Marina Parking Lot. May ninth, workshop, Pahokee Annexation with Treasury Coast Regional Planning Commi, uh, Council. Um, then our commission meeting on May ninth, so it's a lot going on. Then, May thirteenth, Invasion of the Muck Five Car and Bike Show from two to nine. Wednesday, May seventeenth, Town Hall for Financial Literacy for Residents and Businesses. And then Friday, if, if I do have the consensus, we would, uh, be having a commissioner's workshop. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. So you included your report with, okay. That's a whole.
Can I, can I, city manager, a question? Under, um, outstanding items in progress, it says Inspector General Palm Beach County, ongoing investigation looking to be completed by July twenty-three. What investigation is that?
Well, they are doing, um, I guess you guys, uh, last year or so, uh, I guess in twenty-one, asked for an audit of, uh, all the, the cash and all those things, so they're, they're doing the thoroughness, uh, of the request.
The forensic investigation that we, uh, voted on, they're working on that? Okay.
And they went back to, I want to say as far as seventeen all the way up to now.
Okay. Next we'll move into the mayor's report. In honor and recognition of our centennial, we have now the mayors from the last sixty-plus years in front of you. Most, uh, city chambers have their former mayors and current mayors and even current commissioners. Uh, you have at the far left, uh, Duncan Pagek, served it from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen eighty-six, twenty-five years in office. He was, uh, a great mayor. Uh, one of his, uh, memorials and memory project was the tower, the observation tower at the dike that his commission built. Uh, a young man, I think a year later or so, uh, died. He, he, he dropped, uh, suicide, fell from that tower, and they ended up taking it down. Uh, Ms. Pagek, tenure wasn't all fanfare. Uh, at one point, his commission, uh, voted to cede from the union, so to speak. They just wanted to have their own territory, I put it that way. But that was just some little fights behind that. He died of a heart attack, uh, in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, him and his wife, they went to the hospital, he came out, both of them returned at home, and I believe that afternoon, he had a heart attack and couldn't be resuscitated. Uh, next on the list is, uh, Clark Hood Wilkinson. She served as mayor from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-two. She served for five years. She was the first female, uh, mayor of the city of Pahokee. Then next is Roy L. Singertary. Roy Singertary served for one term, uh, although he was the first African-American elected official city commissioner here in Pahokee, but he served as mayor from two thousand to two thousand and two for a two-year period. Next is Raymond Horton Junior. He was the first Hispanic mayor of the city of Pahokee, and I'm not quite sure of Raymond dates, but I believe he served for a total of five years from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, he was instrumental in, uh, getting the prison at the Pahokee site. Uh, the state awarded that prison to Pahokee. He went to Palm Beach County and not only asked for, he begged for fifty thousand dollars to purchase the land so that that land could be used to build a prison on there. And I'm just, uh, go back to Ms. Wilkinson just for a moment. She was the one that pushed for the, uh, ordinance charter change to change our former government from a strong-arm mayor to a city manager council, and that's the government that we currently have. Next is Alvin Davis. Alvin Davis served it briefly in two thousand eighty-six. I believe that's the year that Duncan Pagek died. He briefly served it there, uh, during that time, and he was elected mayor from two thousand, I'm sorry, from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand. So he served a one term as mayor, a two-year, uh, term. Next, we have Wayne Whitaker. Wayne Whitaker served it mayor, as mayor two thousand and eight to two thousand ten. Next, we have J. P. Sasser. J. P. Sasser served it as the Pahokee mayor from two thousand two to two thousand eight. He was running for his fourth consecutive term and lost to Mayor Whitaker handily. Two years later, Mayor Sasser came back and won the election in two thousand ten and served it for another term from two thousand ten to two thousand twelve. J. P. served it for a total of nine years. I'm going to ask you to also keep, uh, J. P. Sasser in your prayers, he's been in poor health in recent, uh, months. Next, we have Colin Walks. Colin Walks served it from two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen. He served it a three-year term. During Colin Walk's election, uh, the city of Pahokee became, for the first time, an all African-American city council during his term. Next is yours truly. I served as mayor from two thousand sixteen to the present. I was elected again in two thousand nineteen and again in two thousand twenty-two. It's a pleasure to serve you. Uh, I'm hoping that I will be able to put the commission pictures in the lobby in there so our pictures will also be up in the chain. I think it's just appropriate that that happened, if that's okay with, uh, the city manager. I, I understand, I, I, I supposed to get permission, I came in here today to put those pictures up, and, uh, I, I did, I failed to get permission in, in time to do that, so I would apologize for that as a problem, uh, on that. Next is just three or four quick announcement. Um, I would like to announce, well, not announce, but just mention that on the twenty-second, we had the Great American Cleanup. It's a great event. The attendance wasn't that high this year, but those that did come out, you know, went out and did a great job in keeping our community clean, and I would just encourage all of our citizens, if you're not able to come out on the cleanup, you know, please clean up around your home property and your home and just make Pahokee look a great again. Uh, also, the Rotary Club held its annual kids fishing tournament on the twenty-second, which was well-attended. I think, I, I know it was at least over fifty kids, and in a little short time I was there, it was a lot of fish being caught. I don't know, caught the biggest one, but I saw even a little girl caught a big catfish that was really, really big. Uh, also attended, uh, last week, Palm Beach County State College Board of Trustees, uh, meeting. I brought greeting and welcome and words from, on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission. Also, this week, I attended a forum, the Forum Club of Palm Beach County Luncheon. The guest speaker was the Honorable U.S. Representative, Representative Clayton. And lastly, uh, I just want to mention, we, we did the city manager performance review as part of his annual evaluation. Uh, it was due, I think we all have completed, hopefully we have, we just have to decide the process of how we want to do it, whether you want to just meet individual with the city manager and share or have an open meeting and just do an overall, uh, uh, comment or two on his performance and where we're going now. I think one thing we do need is to establish, uh, for the upcoming year, uh, some goals that we can agree on that will be base, his performance can be partially based on those goals being, uh, completed. And that's the inclusion of, uh, my report. Next is the city attorney report.
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to, um, make sure that everybody saw Ms. Jordan Gary, who's here. She's been, um, she's attended other meetings before, but she's, um, sitting in tonight with us, and, um, just wanted to acknowledge her. That's all.
Welcome to our chamber.
And she's an attorney in our office.
She's been here before.
Yes, she has. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the item for the future agenda items of the city commission, if any. And I'm gonna start, if I don't, if you all don't mind. Uh, I, I requested at the last commission meeting, we probably would have it on this upcoming one, uh, to look at our, uh, take-home policy, and it didn't make it to this agenda. I'm hoping and thinking it would be on the, uh, on, on the next, and, and again, there is plenty guidelines concerning take-home policies in, in the car, in the, uh, online, so you could have a lot of information you can choose from.
I have one mayor, if we could, uh, there's an opening now on the, um, Palm Beach County Housing Authority Board. Uh, was told that there's a member that retired, so we need to try to, uh, appoint someone for that position on the Palm Beach County Housing Authority.
That's, that's an appointment of the mayor, but anybody can make a recommendation. We'll make sure that they get that information on there. Huh?
Ever now, we haven't received anything, and then nobody's retired or resigned.
Right.
But you can talk, I talked with Mr. Morrison too, that, but it, it, it's a, there's an opening.
Now, actually, the mayor for that particular board, the mayor for some reason on our policy or procedure, the mayor appoint that position, but we certainly won't input from anyone who want to make a recommendation that that's a mayor appointment. Unless I'm mistaken, uh, city clerk, you can check it and make sure, but I think that's what it calls, but when it does occur, I'll put it that way. Okay. Any, any other, uh, suggestion for any good of the order or future agenda items? Okay. Now we move to city commission comments, and we're going to start this time with our vice mayor, commissioner. vice mayor, Commissioner Mervin.
First, there's two announcements. This is coming from the West Tech Education Center. They're having a career expo, and that's going to be on Tuesday, May 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:30. There's opportunities to meet with construction and subcontractors and to explore job opportunities in electrical, HVAC, welding, plumbing, and carpentry. Again, that's on Tuesday, May 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:30. If you have any questions, you can contact Assistant Principal, who is Koshia Jackson-Reese, and that number is (561) 829-4603. And also, along with the, pull it up here, the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority along partnership with the Palm Beach County, and it's the Glaze Alumni Chapter, they're having a Walk for Water, Bring Clean Water to Haiti. It's a walk and run for Haiti. That's Saturday, April 29th, 2023. They'll be at Pioneer Park. There's a registration fee. I don't have my glasses, I really can't see what this is. Here we are. Five dollars for kids, ten for adults. This is to bring awareness to the urgent needs of clean water in Haiti. So the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Glaze Alumni Chapter is sponsoring. A walk-a-thon, all donations and proceeds will be used to support this effort. We welcome you to register and to join us. And that's along with Palm Beach County. Also, mayor, just a comment that I would like to make, and hopefully don't get into a kind of mess, but when we, when we are voting on, and I know questions is fine, but when we say no on change orders on an ongoing project, I know Mr. Bolden asks the engineer, what would happen if you don't approve this? They tell you that the project stops. So when we, we hear saying we want this project to continue, but when we hear that you're voting no on projects, that's ongoing projects, you're telling them to stop work, and you know, that no progress with work moving forward, you know? And I'm hoping and praying that FDOT or Palm Beach County Water don't listen to our meetings, because we telling them, in other words, hey, keep your money, we don't even want your money. Because you telling them no. You telling them no, we don't want, we don't want to finish this project. They're giving you, and I think this is the first time that we get every kind of backup in our, in this agenda for every change order. You get the cost, you get what, how much they get paid an hour, you get who's paying for it, you get every backup in this, in this. So every question that you ask is in this, even down to phone numbers where you can call the engineer, engineer Palm Beach County, FDOT, anybody you want. And it just, it's just, just when you say no, and just really embarrassing on projects, and it's very hard for contractors who won't even want to come to your city. If they have to go through this, why would they even go out, even apply to a bid that we put out? You know, they won't. I understand you overseeing what the commission is supposed to do, and that's what you're supposed to do, but you're reading, you're reading the documents here where it went through three other hands before it got to us, telling us who's paying for, and it's not costing us, we just overseeing the project. And I'm hoping that we can work together and do better with our, with our contractors and with our, with our people that come to the city who want to work for the city, because honestly, if you listen to some of them, they ready to get up out of here just as quick as we want them out of here. And probably won't come back if we got other projects to get done, even the Phase Four project, maybe put that out twice, because the first time, no one even wanted to apply to the bid. So I'm hoping, you know, it's just really sad that we go through things that are asked for with our contractors and our business that want to come and do business with the city.
Commissioner Perez.
Well, you know me, the first thing I'm going to address is the last comment. First of all, it is my duty as the city commissioner to come here and ask any question that I want to ask of anybody that I want to ask it of. What's embarrassing to me is to sit up here and vote one after the other, after the other, without even raising one question. Maybe you're well aware of the entire project, maybe you go, you inspect, you see everything that's going on. I've never heard, never heard, never heard in my age that I have of any, any bid that you bid on a certain amount, and then you're going on twenty-some changing work orders because this is unforeseen things that you didn't see, especially you got less than a mile of linear road construction along with waterworks, okay? Which supposedly have two engineers. So if you have one engineer and he pulls the original drawings, and he says that in twenty years, nothing has been done on that road, and you're doing a reconstruction, it's reconstruction, you're constructing it all over again. So you got to take into account that you're building a road, and you got to do it up to code. How in the world you start working and, and it's, well, this was like this, and this is like this, and this doesn't match, and this, never heard of that. Never heard of, you know, bidding, bidding for one job and then putting a changing work order that gives me more than what I bid it on, on a changing work order. Never heard of it. Only in Pahokee. It's going through, there's no worries from anybody because we're not paying for it, DOT is paying for it. DOT gets the money from the taxpayers, from the taxpayer, whether it's, whether it's the state, the county, the government, whoever. It's not their money, it's not, it's not any individual money, but it's all of our money. And saying that, we all need to be responsible for that, because it's this throwing money that got us in the condition, the whole country, the condition that we're in. Because everybody wants to put the money, and everybody wants to receive, and everybody wants to take, but somebody's going to have to pay. So we're being very, very nonchalant about it. That is my responsibility. There's a lot of things that, that happen with this contract, which to you guys, there's nothing wrong. Hopefully, hopefully the right people are doing their due diligence and going through this, because anyway you look at it, it doesn't add up right. But everything is right on paper. That's the main thing. You have to dot your eyes and you have to cross your teeth, because Tallahassee's over there, you got Broward County, you got Palm Beach County, and you got Pahokee. And, and the one that, that gives the money, gives it to Broward, and Broward has somebody in Palm Beach, and yet nobody knows what the heck is going on here, except for what you're approving on that paper, what you're putting on the paper. It's up to us to see that what needs to be done is being done, and it's being done the way that it's supposed to be done from the beginning, from the beginning, because you know what? We're doing this for the community. We're doing this for the future, for the kids, for the, for the generations that are coming after us. Because if we don't do our, our due diligence, we'll be negligent about it. So y'all do what you want to do, but I'm going to do here what I think that my job is here. That's what I'm going to do. And with that being said, I want to, I want to, I want to find out what, what, Mr. Lucas, I wanted to do a proclamation with the coaches and what's, what's the deal with that? What do I have to do? What, because I haven't heard anything, and I don't know how it's done. I heard all I had to do was tell you guys about it, and you guys do the proclamations, and I've talked about it, I've said it, but nobody has reached out to me and told me, okay, I need this, I need that, or whatever. I want, I want to do that, I want to know what I have to do about it.
You wanted proclamations for the coaches acknowledging what their...
Acknowledging their service to the community and to the, to the youth, to the youth and the community. A lot of them, you know, have given their lifetime to be not only, not only a coach, but a mentor, a father-feeder to a lot of the kids in the community, and they've never been recognized as of that.
Okay, so there's been several different coaches? Do you have a list of specific coaches?
I could give you, I could give you a list if that's what you need. And another announcement that I want to make, we had, from the Pahokee High School, we had, say the teacher's name, she won the Teacher of the Year Award, and I want to say it right. Her name is Mrs., it's F-U-C-E, I don't know if it's Fuse or Fousey, I don't know how you pronounce the name. But I want to congratulate her because she was Pahokee Middle High School teacher, the district's, school district's beginning Teacher of the Year. We not only have the principal of the year, we have a teacher of the year. And that, oh, and also I want to, I want to ask the, most likely is the youth that's doing the little graffiti or signature or, or drawings or whatever it is that they're doing on the sidewalks, please remember that this is for your future, this is so that you could have a decent place to live. So be mindful, try not to vandalize and respect what doesn't belong to you. And if you see somebody doing it, make sure and let them know that that's not the right thing to do. We're trying to make a better place for a better tomorrow, so, you know, we need your help. Help us to keep Pahokee clean, safe, and respect, you know, others' people's belongings.
Commissioner Bolden.
Thank you. I'll make one other quick comment while I'm here. I just want to remind commissioners, those that was here previously, that there was a time period where we sat up here for about a year without asking any question. I don't know if the communication was done behind closed doors, but you didn't have to ask any question because maybe you had the information in advance, so we need to kind of think about that. And when we ask questions, when, when, when the chair, the mayor called for questions, question is just to clarify some things that you may need to make an informed vote. If you're going to vote one way or the other, you already know how you're going to vote, it's no use to you asking questions. Your voice is your vote. When you vote yes or no, you're saying you disagree with that. We don't have to take up the whole meaning to do that. We take in on an ordinance or a resolution, and sometimes we take thirty minutes because there's all these bombarded questions. We're going to give you an opportunity to ask a question, you have that right, but you don't have to take up all the time to do it when you know this is the way you're going to vote anyway ninety-nine percent of the time. So I just want to just bring that out and put it out in the front. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to do some follow-ups here. The first follow-up is, how are we doing with Ms. Walker, the late, Ms. Walker's bench? Memorial bench? I'm sorry?
Part of the neat grant. As part of the beautification piece of the neat grant, we've included benches and the trash receptacles that we've presented to you as part of our beautification project. And the memorial bench was a part of our beautification project in terms of the benches that we would be placing throughout the city.
I thank you. And second thing is the RV park and the boat race, are we doing anything about that to go down the road? I'm aware, I'm aware of, we don't have many amenities after the...
I'll bring something back for tonight.
Okay, and last thing, you and I spoken about possibly having a Reddins Memorial Park.
What's the location?
That's what we were discussing.
What's the location?
Mayor, just one thing if I can say, just congratulations to Commissioner Bolden for being recognized as, I'm trying to get it right here. Where is it here? What is it, Commissioner Bolden? Don't tell me.
Influential Black Professionals, South Florida.
Say it again.
Influential Black Professionals, South Florida, Legacy Magazine.
Yes, so we want to congratulate Commissioner Bolden for that.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for the adjournment.
So moved.
Been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin, second by Commissioner Gonzalez for the adjournment of the meeting. Call for questions here in none, and you ready for a vote roll? Call mental clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Matt?
Yes.